Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our regularly scheduled Mayor and Council meeting for Monday, November 23rd, 2020. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number 1A for this evening's session is the approval of the work session minutes from October 21st, 2020.
Motion to approve?
A motion by Councilmember Ner.
Go second.
A second by Councilmember Purnell. All in favor say aye. All opposed? The minutes from the work session of October 21st, 2020 passed unanimously with Councilmember Nichols absent. Item 1B is the approval of our regular session minutes from November 9th, 2020.
I have a correction.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ors.
Under six, Town Administrator's report, really just to clarify the last sentence, it reads, "Lastly," he mentioned at the water tower. Who can change he to Mr. Fleetwood, just so there's no confusion on my statement prior to that? And with that, I would make a motion to approve.
A motion by Councilmember Ors with corrections.
Done, move.
A second by Councilmember Purnell. All in favor say aye. All opposed? And the minutes from our regular session of November 9th, 2020 passed unanimously with the corrections. Then, the approval of our executive session minutes from November 16th, 2020.
Motion to approve?
A motion by Councilmember Ner.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Ors. All in favor say aye. All opposed? And the executive session minutes from November 16th, 2020 passed unanimously. Item 1D is the statement of closure for the executive session of November 16th, 2020. And under the written statement for closing a meeting, under the OVA Meetings Act, this falls under item number 10. Item number 10 reads as follows: "To discuss public security if the public body determines that public discussion will constitute a risk to the public or to public security, including the development of fire and police services and staff," or "the deployment of fire and police services and staff," or "to the development and implementation of emergency plans." And do I have to read the vote, by any chance, on that?
No problem saying it when you have us.
Okay. The vote to go into executive session was unanimous with all councilmembers present. All right. Item number two on the agenda is a proclamation declaring November as Municipal Government Works Month. We realize that it is November 23rd. In the future, these will be done probably the last meeting before the month that they would go into effect. So proclamation 2020-21, a proclamation of the Mayor and Council of the town of Berlin, Maryland proclaiming November to be Municipal Government Works Month. The Mayor and Council of the town of Berlin does hereby proclaim November to be Municipal Government Works Month. Whereas, the town of Berlin was incorporated in 1868, and Maryland is home to 157 municipalities. And whereas, municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials. And whereas, in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Berlin is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And whereas, during 2020, the town of Berlin promoted municipal government awareness by being proactive in dealing with COVID-19 pandemic, by limiting exposure of employees in the workplace, by modifying work schedules and allowing eligible employees to telework, collecting 143 tons of recycling, entering into a maintenance agreement with the Maryland-Delaware Railroad at the West Street Ditch location, being awarded $30,000 in facade grant funding for the downtown district, receiving a safety award and a power plant number-two engine replacement award from American Municipal Power, AMP, issuing 32 certificates of occupancy, replacing sidewalks on Pitt Street, Walnut Hill, Flower Street, Henry Park entrance, and Commerce Street aprons, and paved more than three miles of town streets, publishing the Berlin Bulletin monthly, and welcoming 10 new businesses to our town. Whereas, municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures, and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, and play, and explore. Now therefore being proclaimed that the Mayor and Council of the town of Berlin, Maryland hereby joins the Maryland Municipal League, MML, in declaring November to be Municipal Government Works Month in the town of Berlin. Witness my hand and seal this 23rd day of November 2020. Thank you. It was rather lengthy, but it's well worth it. Item number three is the deeding of real property at Willows of Berlin. And our Town Administrator Jeff Fleetwood and our Planning Director David Inglehart are going to run point on that.
I need to put this down just so they can see the map as well. You guys should have it on your screens so they can see it a little bit larger. It's coming. You can go ahead and start it.
All right. Over the last couple of weeks, I've sent a sizable, significant number of documents, everyone, regarding this property. And to go back in time, a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Doug Holdrin was here from Willows, from Ingraham. He was a gentleman sat up at the table and shared with you what his vision was of this redesign, if you will, for Willows, which is at the end of Maple Street. The issue that came into play, if you take a look at the map that I gave you or what's on your screen, moreover, a look at the smaller picture, so on the screen in the top right, I don't know how you've got your paper oriented, but on the top right, you can see the hash mark area. That is the piece of property that's in question. It's roughly 11,000 square feet of property. And the history on that is, going back to the early 1990s, it was believed incorrectly that that property was actually owned by the Willows. In turn, it was determined during a title search that that piece of property does in fact belong to the town of Berlin. So that said and done, it caused issues with the developer. He had everything designed, if you will, based off what he thought to be true. So the dilemma that we had was to have him go back and redesign everything, keep the property, sell the property, or what my recommendation has been continually to deed the property over to Willows with conditions. And those conditions that we've explored are three. One, to pave Maple from the entrance of the development all the way to Flower Street. Two, to run sidewalks on Maple Avenue from the development to Elizabeth. That way, we have a complete run of sidewalks on Maple. And then, three, to retain the easement, if you will, for the stole property, which is adjacent to the entrance. All that said and done, those three things that we've asked for, none of those things will take place, i.e. deeding that over to Ingraham and Willows, until the work has been completed to Town Standard, and then in turn, yes, it'll be deeded. The value of that land is approximately $11,000. The amount of work that Willows is proposing to do for us, my personal and professional opinion, I think it's inflated slightly because the actual value from the contractor is $33,708. Why do I say that's inflated just a little bit? When you take a look at the mobilization, that's $800. The reality is, one would think that he will not do this work, the paving and the sidewalk work. He's going to have the contractor already in place. So my gut is that that $800 has already been incorporated because they're already there. So, I mean, in fairness, we're looking at about $33,000 worth of work for a $10,000 piece of property.
And just to be clear, those three conditions are all needing to be met before it would be deeded over. They're not one or the other. They're all three.
All three. And in the motion, if you go to your packets, Agenda Item Number Three, if you go to 1, 2, 3, the fourth paragraph, it reads, "Whereas, in consideration the developer has agreed to perform at the developer's expense other on-site work and improvements to Maple Avenue and adjacent sidewalks and properties to be specified in the project's public works agreement with the town. Only upon satisfactory completion will these items then we convey." So I can tell you, it's in here. It's also in the public works agreement as well. Thinking ahead, Dave?
Nope. That public works agreement will be exercised soon as they close on the property. This item was an item we needed to clear up before the Willows at Berlin closes. Right now, the project's known as Wolf Terrace. You may be familiar. It's going to be renamed the Willows at Berlin. They're redoing the existing apartments and building 34 more apartment units, townhouse-style apartment buildings, and one clubhouse, a community building on site, and quite a lot of other improvements to the grounds and to the site. But they need this cleared up before they go ahead and complete their sale to go ahead with the project. Everything is ready for permitting, except for the fees, and that public works agreement once they close.
Since part of his construction encroaches on this town property, will he be able to start construction without that being conveyed to him? Because you don't want to pave the street until after he's all done with what he's doing, right?
It's a matter of setback, Jake. It's not going to be...
It's all setback in trade. It's not actually all the property is setbacks.
None of the new construction is going to be on this property. It just had to be set back from it, so...
Well, I see the corner of one of his buildings going into the property.
I'm not following you. I'm not... Oh, I think I know what he's looking at. There's a paper copy to that one building. This paper copy shows this thing.
Yeah, that's why I say that's like the building restricted line on the parcel. That would be on the existing parcel. So without that red line there, you know, when he owns the, when we convey the property, then that building could be constructed there and not be encroaching on the setback.
Right. But my point is, if you want him to pave the road and do the sidewalks before you turn this property over to him, technically, the town would still own that portion. So he can't put that building on that parcel. Correct? Do you understand what I'm saying here?
I do, but I don't, we didn't look at it that way. No.
So you want him to do the work of paving the street and building the sidewalks before you give him the property? I understand that. However, he needs to construct his building before he paves the street. I mean, that would only make sense. So he needs to have access to the property.
With any of the public works agreements, okay, they are, you know, we enter into them with the permitting at the time of permitting.
Right.
But they're the same there until complete. Like, I would make Ocean's East an example. Till the entrance road and all those construction pieces were complete, they weren't final out, they weren't given a certificate of occupancy. That's our leverage on those, on any public works agreement. So this would be the same. The conveying of the property's not going to be recorded unless that public works agreement is satisfied, and we're satisfied with the condition of the Maple Avenue paving and the new sidewalks. So, I mean, I hear exactly what you're saying, but that's truly a chicken or an egg thing. You know, how do we let the property go forward?
I agree with that. And to me, it's all the more incentive to the developer to get this done right because he's going to be, he's going to be in a world of hurt if he doesn't follow through on not only the buildings he wants to construct, but the conditions that we've set. Because if he doesn't follow through, his building's on our property, and he's going to have a big problem.
Yeah. It's also going to fall on 350%.
That's correct.
So I don't see it as being a...
Yeah, it's not a problem, but you are letting him construct on town property.
And the way that it looks now, I mean, there is already a corner of that building that is on town property, and it's been there for a long time. So, I mean, we're in almost a similar circumstance already.
That's a proposal.
Oh, I apologize.
Where does it say that this construction will be of Town Standards? Is it in the public works agreement?
That's correct.
Yep.
Would it be too much to ask that those three words be included in this agreement?
I think it is, isn't it?
I think it is.
Where is it?
The last...
Fourth paragraph.
It's to be specified in the project's public works agreement with the DAS.
Yeah. But it doesn't say specifically in disagreement concerning Town Standards.
I mean, we could add that.
Could we just add properties to, could we just stick that somewhere? That was in Jeff's statement, in his rendition of the summary of disagreement, and I just think it should be in there somewhere.
I would suggest the last sentence of that paragraph should say, "Only upon satisfactory completion of these items to Town Standards will a parcel convey."
True. That work?
That work for you?
Yes.
Hold on one second. Make sure I have this correct. So the last sentence of paragraph four would read, "Only upon satisfactory completion of these items upon Town Standards?"
To Town Standards.
To Town Standards. Thank you.
And then, a comma, "Will a parcel convey?"
Oh, will a parcel convey?
Next, Dave.
What? Yeah. We are, yeah, we are looking for action by the council.
I'll make the motion. We passed motion of the Mayor and Council 2020-29 as recently amended.
Second. So I have a motion by Councilmember Purnell and a second by Councilmember Ors for motion 2020-29, with the last sentence of paragraph number four being modified to read, "Only upon satisfactory completion of these items to Town Standards will a parcel convey." All in favor say aye. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number four, Town Administrator's report.
Okay, I want to get this one out of the way real quick. Ivy keeps texting me, get to add stuff, so this is like a Christmas list. For my weekly report, this is coming from Ivy Wells, getting ready for Friday, the ice ice event. Ice sculptures will be set up starting at 3:00 PM. Additional mandatory mass signs have been ordered and will be put up on Friday. We are seeking donations to purchase gift cards for the kids of Worcester Gold. If anyone is interested, please contact Ivy. And, Trump turned this into an advertisement now. Think your house can win a decorating contest for the holidays, and you can win some great prizes. A map featuring all the homes will be available the first week in December. Visit berlinmainstreet.com/entry. So there's, what I gather by that, that's going to be a holiday season home decorating contest. So that's from Ivy. From the Electric Utility, I want to give an update on something. We originally had applied for a solar grant for a solar field that would be a rooftop because this is the only, the only way you can get the grant money is for a rooftop, not a ground mount. So the original grant that we applied for was for a 23 KW system. We made the application. We were on time. We were the first to apply, and the first to be on time. And then, in conversation with MEA, Maryland Energy Administration, their idea, which I really liked, they came back and said, "Can you do anything bigger at that location?" So we had the engineers go back, and we're able to now go from a 23 KW to a 48.95, 49 KW system. So pretty much, and more than doubled it. The cost, it will cost the town absolutely zero. It is fully funded by MEA, up to $125,000. So just as a couple tidbits that I do want to share, in talking with them and in talking with Alvin Cat, that system is, has a projected shelf life of 25 years. We would own the system, not lease it, which is important. And then, the energy that will be produced from that solar array will supply 113 school fields, so that in reality is going to save approximately $10,000 a year from the electric building paying for their energy source. So I think that's a win-win. Again, it's only a rooftop system, so that's where we're at. So the grant is in. It's not been approved as of today. We look forward to seeing that approved in the very near future. And that is all I have there.
And the one caveat with that is the $0 out-of-pocket expense for the town, there was $8,000 budgeted, so that's a nice little savings for us.
That is correct.
Thank you. Department reports, do you want to take, whoever's not in attendance?
I'm going to let Ner speak.
I actually don't have anything this evening.
Could you just elaborate on the closure for the holiday, for...
For this week?
Correct.
Yes. The town offices are closed on Thursday and Friday. If your trash collection is normally scheduled for either day, it'll be on Wednesday, but there will be no recycling collection for Friday for this week. Thank you.
And before we go to Dave and Kelsey, I do want to say, the mayor does not make a very good traffic guard, okay? So, that said, you made me think of something, and so the public can hear this. Town offices affected today until further notice are closed to the public. All town buildings are closed to the public. And obviously, the epicenter is Town Hall because people come here to pay the utility bills. So you've got a number of options to pay the bills. You can, one, mail it. Two, you can go online. It's very easy to navigate, but you do need a credit card. And number three, you can use the bill drop that's adjacent to Town Hall. Phones work. People are demanding phones. So if there's an issue, call. But again, buildings are closed. That includes the public works yard, the water plant, the wastewater plant, and the public works yard, and the electric utility. They're all closed. But if people need someone from there, call, okay? Worst-case scenario, call Town Hall, begin to remind citizens of the town, we are, for the most part, operating with a very modified work schedule, so we want to maintain our responsiveness. So if people are not at the phone, that means they're out working. If they're not answering the phone, call Town Hall, and we'll run somebody down.
But I'll also add to that, that we are running modified schedules for Town Hall as well. We have one person answering the phones, basically. So if the call doesn't get answered immediately, leave a message, and someone will get back to you.
And I was telling people that the bill pay button is up in the top right corner. If you're looking at that on a computer.
Yes.
It's on the top right.
Exactly.
Okay? Kelsey?
I don't have anything, but I just didn't know if maybe one of you guys were touching on Allen. Did you want to...
Yeah. Yeah, the mayor today and about a half dozen employees gathered. Allen Parkinson, one of our chief linesmen, was nominated by Tim Lawrence for a Safety Hard Hat Award. Very, from the ant perspective, I can tell you, it's a very distinguished award. It's not just given because you nominate someone. Allen's been with the town approximately seven years. He is, his primary focus, other than being the chief linesman, he's also our chief trainer for our two linesman apprentices. Allen is a go-getter. Allen's a hard worker, and I can tell you, he eats, breathes, and sleeps safety. If you watched him out here with the Christmas tree, I mean, when they were decorating, he's all over that stuff. He doesn't take shortcuts. So kudos to Allen Parkinson, and kudos to Tim Lawrence and his entire department.
And Tim also received this award, so he's the second, Allen is the second employee to receive it, and we told him that the caveat of the award is that he has to groom the next recipient for next year. So hopefully, we can keep this going.
Dave?
Yeah, I just want to add too, when we were talking about the office closings, the planning office is also, the door is locked according with the protocols we have in place. But someone's there every day. We have our own drop box we placed outside the front door. There are, if the public needs or a property owner needs, we put blank permit applications in there with some notes on how, you know, what we will need to accompany it. You can also always contact us by phone or by email. That's on the town website under the Planning Department tab. You can reach out to me. My number is 410-641-4143, should you have permit questions or... I think we kind of caught up with pending permits, except for, I mean, there might be a half a dozen that are a little longer term anyway. But someone is in our office every day, so either Carolyn or myself, or both, till we get to a different schedule. So business as usual, except the door is locked. I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for any of our departments, or independents?
Have there been any operational changes dealing with the public's apartment?
Not really, no. The access there is still what it's been. You've got that foyer when you come in. It's secure. You can still speak to the dispatcher through the glass.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to number six, comments from the mayor. So I would like to bring everybody up to speed that the Mayor and Council did send a letter to the Maryland Board of Public Works pertaining to a land acquisition by the Department of Natural Resources. The letter was sent on November 13th, 2020, and it pertained to the Bay Club property and the adjacent farmland known as the Dossett Farm. To my knowledge, that has passed the Board of Public Works unanimously, so we can look forward to that property adding to the green belt that's in our comprehensive plan and some of the passive-use recreational activities that will be just right outside the boundaries of the town of Berlin. So that's good news for everybody. And I think it's to the tune of a little more than 600 acres, correct? So it's pretty vast. In addition to that, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving with the holiday coming up. Please be safe. And that's everything on my report. So we'll move to comments from the council with Vice President Varell.
I don't have a thing, except have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
You too.
You too.
Councilmember Purnell?
A happy Thanksgiving. Oh, Gene Holloway coming.
Right now, the tentative for the next agenda is going to bring your coffee, okay? We're hoping that we're going to be Zooming. I said the autumn memorial, there's hoping, but the next agenda on the...
It's hefty.
Huh?
It's a hefty one.
It's a hefty one on the 14th. So we have the PKS audit. We have the state highway coming to talk to us about perpetual easements and et cetera for 376 and 113. We have Gene Holloway. And then, we have Blair Rannier for additional EDUs for Phase...
Two?
Two. Phase two of Ocean's East.
And what is this? And when is this?
December fourteenth at least.
I'm gonna give you the date.
We need to see December's schedule for you first.
And there's no excuses, everybody knows.
The fourteenth will be rather set.
Yes.
Yep. But we've earned it because there will not be a second meeting in December, so. Any other questions, or comments, council member?
No.
Okay, council member Horace?
Well, first I want to wish everyone as well a safe and healthy and happy Thanksgiving. I do have some questions real quick. Do we have any, how did the last talk pick up go?
There was actually something in the weekly report about that. Let me try to recollect.
I believe it was three tons, or just under three tons.
No, I think it was, I think it was just, it was right around three tons.
Wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a lot less.
Compared to, I want to say thirteen the last time.
Thirteen or fourteen last year.
Yeah, yeah. And three or four hours of, of work rather than two days.
Okay.
So it was a significant improvement.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then I was just wondering if Ivy had any, the, the Ice Ice Berlin event, I'm looking forward to going downtown, going down and taking a look. The sculptures, where will they be?
All right, to give you a little layout on how that's gonna happen, at three o'clock, the gentleman, and the name escapes me who the ice sculpture gentleman is, met with Ivy last week. The sculptures have already been designed, right, so they're, they're in a big freezer. He will show up here on Friday at three or about three. Main Street will be closed. They're basically gonna sit on top of a milk crate, so just give you an idea, you know, maybe eighteen inches by eighteen inches. And the crates will be lined up for the merchants on Main Street, down the yellow line, the normal main street. Side streets will be actually read up with the business. The plan is that on or about nine P M, the contractor will be back moving those sculptures from the center of Main Street up to the building, if, whatever's left of the ice, because it's supposed to be around sixty degrees off that, and move those up to the building.
Great, thank you. And then just my final thing real quick is it is a little bit of a point of order. Wasn't sure where the right place to do this, but the approval of the work session minutes from ten-twenty-one, last meeting, we couldn't do that because council member Nichols was not present and she's not here tonight. So is that something that we could have, we should have approved?
That's a valid point. Dave?
I didn't realize it, what hadn't been, I.
So I, you know.
Well, I mean, if. If the minutes have been reviewed, we could take a vote on it right now if there's sufficient form that would.
It was voted on, but he's asking if they should have or they should rescind that vote, I guess.
I would.
Until she's present.
I would offer that a work session is more of an informational meeting. There are no decisions made, there's, there are no changes to policies or practices. I, I.
I misunderstood. No, every, just because you were at a council meeting does not mean we can't approve minutes if you missed the next meeting. I mean, we have a quorum present that was present at that meeting and it's appropriate to.
We do not have.
We do not have a forum.
Dean and I don't have.
It was just Shanika, Jay, and Jay and the mayor.
Okay.
I gotta go.
I'm not recollecting it.
Mayor, I, I need, I need, I need to stop training real quick. Excuse me. I just got an email from Mr. Holden, and he says, please give me a call ASAP. I heard the language that was, that was, I can't read. Bear with me. I heard the language that was added and it may not work. We need the property beaded to us so we can close. We wouldn't do the work on Maple Avenue until after construction of the building is complete, which we knew that. Work on Maple was bonded, and if for some reason we didn't do it, the town would have money to complete it.
So am I understanding you that the discussion we had about when the property is turned over to Willows is what's in question?
Yes.
He's, he's determined to go to settlement.
And I recall that was part of the, the conversation was that they needed that done prior to moving forward. I do recall that now.
Dave Gaskell?
Want to revisit the motion.
Revisit the motion. Now, how would, how would that be framed differently than what we passed?
It's bonded, so.
Well, the town's gonna have a hundred and fifty percent bond on all those improvements. So if they're not done, you're not gonna give them a C E O or the bond back.
That's it.
That's gonna be your assurance even after you've deeded the property over to them.
So then why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we finish council member Horace's question pertaining to the minutes from the October work session? And then just so that we're not getting anything crossed, why don't we take a brief recess, allow Jeff and Gaskell to talk to Willows to make sure that, because I understand there is a time constraint against this, that if we prolong it too long, it could, could mess things up. So then what we'll do is we'll have a brief recess for a moment, allow everybody to get on the same train, and then come back together, if that's okay.
That's fine.
So referencing council member Horace's question regarding the October meeting.
And I can clarify that for Mr. Gaskell. The work session was just council member Orner and, and Nichols, so it was a new orientation. So without her here, he's asking, should they have even voted on it? That's it, so. I guess.
Well, the proven minutes are really an administrative matter. You know, technically, the council can't take any action without the affirmative vote of three members. And what you're telling me is that there were, there were not three members present?
There were three present, but one is not here this evening.
There are not three present this evening, who were present at that meeting.
Well, then it should, we should approve them at the next meeting.
Does anything need to be done, or just state those will be moved to the next meeting of December fourteenth?
Have it on.
All right, so let's finish council comments and then, then we'll table, or we'll, we'll postpone and then come back and finish eight through ten. All right, council member Merrick?
I'll make this quick and simple, just wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Now, for our recess, why don't we just, for the sake of everything, we'll keep the camera running?
Whichever you would prefer.
Yeah, let's just keep it running if nobody has any objections. And Fleetwood and Gaskell, if you don't mind, maybe taking the discussion just in the hallway?
Yep.
Should I make, should we make a motion to recess for ten minutes?
We can, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to recess for fifteen minutes.
Okay, motion by council member Horace to recess for fifteen minutes, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by council member Merrick, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll reconvene in.
Fifteen minutes.
Yeah. What was it? Seven.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Fifty-two.
I guess think of it this way, if he hadn't said something, it could have been another, would have had to throw another meeting together or something.
I made a text for my sister, I'm watching you. She's in Nashville.
Are you giving her a shout out right now on Facebook Live? I stopped walking back this way because I'm like seeing myself in the camera at the start of the video, so now I'm going around. I don't like that.
Next meeting is Zoom?
Yeah, I think we should be.
That's the goal.
We should be ready to ramp up with Zoom.
So the meeting on the fourteenth is probably be by Zoom.
Yes, so you'll be near your coffee maker and you can.
I'm walking out of there.
You can refresh.
I'm gonna get in the hot tub.
Remember, we are still live.
I always try to act that the camera's always on. Yep. Get in trouble that way.
The mics are hot.
Now, the true administrative question is do we have to run the clock to fifteen minutes?
No. Well, you left the camera on.
We did, we left the camera on. So anybody that's watching, if you're ready to start earlier than expected.
So move. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna need a motion to.
Make a motion to reconvene the, the.
Well, make a motion to reconvene, I guess, but.
Regular session.
Yeah.
I have a motion by council member Horace to reconvene our regular session of the mayor and council for Monday, November twenty-third, and a second by council member Burrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the, the motion passes unanimously. Now.
We need a motion to reconsider motion twenty twenty dash twenty-nine.
All right, hold on one second, hold on, get back to where we are. All right, so we need a motion to reconsider motion twenty twenty dash twenty-nine.
So move a second.
Okay, so we have a motion by council member Burrell and a second by council member Purnell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion to reconsider motion twenty twenty dash twenty-nine is approved unanimously. So what do we need to do, gentlemen?
Well, Jeff and I believe that if you, if you go to the fourth paragraph, we take out the last sentence in its entirety. After, let, let me just read how, how it would, would be, that paragraph. Whereas in consideration, the developer has agreed to perform at the developer's expense other off-site work and improvements to Maple Avenue and adjacent sidewalks and properties to be specified in the project's public works agreement with the town, comma, all to be completed per town standards, period. And that would be the end of that paragraph.
All to be completed per town stand?
Per town stand.
Per town standards. Any other changes that need to be made for?
No, I think we're done.
Okay, so Mr., Mr. Cardwall's in agreement with?
Well, Mr. Holden.
Holden.
He actually made a comment here. He said, there's a bond for the work on Maple. It's more than covered. I won't bill eight million dollars for the buildings and not do thirty thousand dollars for her work on Maple.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay?
So if there are no questions.
Do you, do you not need to put the bond amount in this agreement?
No, it's, it's in the public, it'll all be.
Move to, move to amend the agreement as indicated by Mr. Gaskell.
So we have a motion by council member Burrell to approve motion twenty twenty dash twenty-nine as amended by our attorney, Dave Gaskell, looking for a second.
Second.
And a second by council member Nurr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And motion twenty twenty dash twenty-nine passes with the amendments from Dave Gaskell unanimously. All right. So let's go back to our agenda. And thank you, everybody at home, for dealing with us as we do the ring and roll of, of agenda. Now to number eight, and that's comments from the public. Did we have any comments submitted from the public?
No.
Okay, and no public are in attendance this evening? So comments from the press, which there are none in attendance. Any questions submitted from the press? Okay, and then we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
A motion by council member Burrell.
Thanks.
A second by council member Purnell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.